So we are, folks, we ready?
They don't want to stay here, that's why they ain't.
Really?
Yeah, they used to complain all the time, do they still complain?
What? We're gonna move on to the resolutions introduced. No, we're gonna move on to the resolutions held. No, introduced. We have two, Mike Wheeler and Trey Kingston is here. And Darius is here too for some reason. We're gonna move to Resolution 2051-19, which relates to adjustments related to the council, related to contract with the communications workers. And I'm gonna ask Mike to quickly summarize, and then if there are any questions.
I am happy to say that we did reach an agreement with Dispatch. It's been a long time coming, they've been out since 2014. So the way it rolled out was, we had them signed through 2019, there was a wage freeze in 15, one and a half percent increase in 16, one in 17, one in 18, and two in 19. The wages are redwacked to 1117. Other financial costs in that package were additional holiday that was added, Martin King Day, which every other group is getting. And we did increase their EMD stipend, $1,000, on top of the $1,000 that we're getting already. That's a special certification that they get to do calls for at Fire Department as well. So with that, with this agreement, it does bring them very much in line with what the county is paying. So we no longer have a disparity with the county being above our staff, we are right in line with them now. I do have one correction to make on this where it says, we're transferring 104703, should be 104704 on both Retiree Health and Retirement. This unit has had significant vacancy savings the last couple of years. They are still down seven. They are looking to hire one in May, but I'm very comfortable with them absorbing about $100,000 into their existing budget. But I am moving the rest of the 309407 from Retiree Health, which we also have seen significant decreases in over the last several years. So I'm comfortable with that number and Retirement as well. So, you know, this was one of our, this is our longest outstanding contract with other police groups, so I'm happy that we got this done.
Any questions?
Yes. Are you continuing negotiations to the Dispatches, with the county, or is that like? Honestly, one day it feels dead, one day it feels alive, and it's hard. But currently, I'm not negotiating with anyone right now. I am setting up a meeting with Chief Hawkins shortly, to talk to the county about what, if any, interest there is in going forward. But at this point, we're just, we're moving on, business as usual, looking at them being up and up with us.
And I know I can ask this follow-up question, since it's our salary thing. We have, from what I understand, probably, we're down 50 police officers at this time?
We are.
So that's a big savings right there or something. Do you know of any plans when a new class is coming in, or what?
It's, that's something I would actually, I would go to the Command Staff with. We are limited with the scope of our training center. I know, I believe the number is about 20. We are looking at outside classrooms. I think the big issue is finding space to do training. So I know the Chief and the Mayor are reaching out to the county and some other entities, see if they had Hudson Valley, to see if there was space. So we are looking to expand the training, but for now, we're limited to 20. The new class is coming out shortly, and I haven't heard anything about hiring another class this year at this point. But I assume that that would be a priority.
So we might be down 60 then?
It's not a good situation. It's not a good situation at all, so it is certainly, you know, a priority. But no, we are, we have, we have 16 coming out this month.
Oh, yeah, you have, there was a class, could have been 20, they got 19, and then that Class 4 dropped out, so you got 14, and then Friday.
Right.
And some of those might be leaving already.
Tom? Yeah, Tony, have a?
Yeah, I have a question on the back pay. How many of the Dispatches have left on the county and different agencies? And will they be eligible for the back pay if they were working during that period?
Anyone who was working during that period would get, would get the increase, yes. That's why all contracts.
Even if they left?
Yep, if you were, like, even retirees, if they were in that unit during that time period, they would see a check, a retro check for that.
Alyssa and Derek?
Yeah, I just wanted to share my frustration with a lot of police officers, especially looking at the summer that we had last year, and now we're about to...
That's probably a question that's probably more appropriate for the Chief. I'm sure we're not intentionally holding them down to save money.
But this is about the budget, wait, because it's a budget. There are individuals who are doing overtime.
Yep.
But, and it's, if we could figure out a way, instead of having police officers who are doing three shifts, four shifts, or whatever, extra overtime, we can figure out a way to hire individuals so we can alleviate the overtime business.
It's an absolute priority, and what's being done, as they're looking at alternatives, that's really an issue with Command Staff, really, to bring their numbers up.
Yep, Derek?
So, my own question was connected to overtime with the police because the word that we're hearing is that they're not giving them overtime, and causing some type of friction between the officers and pretty much doing their work. So with them being down 60 officers, what I'm hearing, right?
Fifty right now.
Okay, are they gonna loosen up, or?
There's no shortage of overtime. If there's restrictions on overtime, it's a Command Staff decision, not a budget decision.
Police Chief.
But there's, they're, they're, from a budget perspective, they are spending more money on overtime than they have previously.
I mean, so, like, we, like, and I must say this, because the Chief takes, you know, the Chief was hired by who?
The Mayor, but he runs the department, he's the administrator of the, he schedules, you know, he has people on, that's his job.
Well, what Mike is saying is, the Budget Division is not directing the department to hold down overtime. Anything that you might really need to hold in overtime is a question, it's either the Chief or the Command Staff. It's not coming out of budget.
It's administrative.
All right, well, my, I guess, well, my question is, being that we're down so many officers, like, you know, it has to be some type of different approach taken, because you just can't leave areas of the city uncoordinated.
The police not having access to overtime isn't, that's the first that I've heard that. So the numbers, the numbers don't reflect that.
So, I mean, the arrests are reflecting that if you have the days where police court is having no arraignments, and from what I'm understanding, that's not...
You are absolutely speaking to the wrong guy. I'm at issue, that is not how I heard it.
So are there any questions on the, on the contract and the particular resolution?
Joe asked the question.
Well, yes. I do think, I'm sorry I brought it up, because I think we do have to have a meeting.
But I wanted the information to know, how many people are being sworn in with this class?
I thought, I mean, I thought it was, I thought four had dropped, but it could be down.
Yeah, four had dropped out. They only had 20.
And so then, the next class is being scheduled?
I don't know what the timeframe on that, on that is right now. I don't, I haven't heard anything specifically to me, but I'm not necessarily involved in that at this point either. What I do know is last night, we are down 50, and there is, there is an alert level effort to get a class together and to get more space from other entities outside, you know, that we can, the county, Hudson Valley. It's an issue of classroom space, so there is, there is an effort.
But I also heard that only nine people showed for the physical?
I don't, that, that...
Nine people left, showed for the physical.
Okay.
Mike, I got this question, you're comparing these officers who have left, and then they, you know, graduate, and they leave within a year. I mean...
I don't, I don't, I don't know where you're getting that information from, and that's not really reflective either. There may be a couple of examples of that, but historically, that's not why officers have issues.
All right, any question, additional questions on the contract? Okay. I will note that the Police Department is, Chief's way overdue in submitting his, the quarterly staffing report, which we have not received. So that's something that might answer some of the questions also that you guys have. But we will have to remind you of that. If there is nothing else on that, this would be a pass then for Monday? Okay, thanks, Mike.
And who sponsors?
Okay, Judy? I'm going to now go to Resolutions Held. Item 4 is an adjustment in the Assessor's Office that was previously introduced, and Trey is here to answer any questions on that. So Trey, you can, can you talk about police staff?
Yeah, yeah.
Could you just quickly, uh?
We, I'm asking for a small adjustment from my Contracted Services line into, to create a new appraisal line. The Data Entry Operator is a position that I would like to write off and increase the budget, create a second appraisal for my office. Our former Data Entry Operator retired late last year. Her duties really were to answer the phone, and during the exemption application period to process some exemptions, I think that we could much, we could better utilize a position with somebody that would be able to go out in the field and assist in much other things rather than administrative actions within the office. I asked Mike to take it from my Contracted Services line, because I think it would be recouped pretty quickly, actually, because I would have to lean less on our advisors and consultants, you know, use them less, get charged less hourly rate there, and could probably make, you know, it's gonna be break even for me easily there.
Salary?
Yeah, I am retired.
The total salary for the assessor position struck me as low, what is it?
For the Appraiser? It was just under $41,000. I think it's $40,782, I wanna say. And it strikes me as low, too.
Yeah, so Alyssa and then Tom?
On the top of staff, how many staffers do you have in the department?
We currently have three employees with a vacant, vacancy.
What are, like, typical assessors' offices, what do they typically have? Like, comparative to, like, George or Skene?
I know that, you know, Colony has 14 employees, they maintain two full-time commercial appraisers, two full-time residential appraisers. I even know that the town of Bethlehem has seven or eight employees dealing with less parcels than we have, and across the river is the same thing, they're in the double digits as well.
Tom?
Great, I know your office is doing a great job of the STAR program, and it's not more complicated. I don't think this will, are you able to keep up with what we're requesting, so?
Well, the STAR isn't as bad as it may seem, because if you read the paper last Friday, and they directed everyone to come to the assessor, that's really an administrative phone call thing for us. They actually go to the County Tax Director, and then she notifies us to remove the exemptions. You know, it's not a lot of actual physical work or anything in the office, it's more just correcting the story and sending them to the proper people.
Have there been any people taken advantage of?
So far, from the County Tax Director, I've only received four for full renunciation of previously granted exemption forms, but judging from the phone calls we've received, there'll probably be several thousand.
I think that just, information just came out?
Yeah.
And if you look, if you are currently receiving the credit, it probably your, to your advantage to...
Well, there's, so there's two, there's two programs. Prior to 2016, there was a STAR exemption.
Right.
If anyone has purchased a house after 2016, they don't need to take any action, they're already in the state's rebate program. So rather than getting a deduction from your school tax bill, you pay your full bill, and then you get a rebate check October, November-ish. So it only affects people that have owned their property since prior to 2016.
Is it a big problem getting that check, or do you have to report it on your income tax?
And, Tom, I, I know, you know, that's something that is, I don't know how it's gonna be handled next year, and it's scary, and I was actually over at a Neighborhood Association meeting in your neck of the woods the other day, and, you know, I told them, there is a low-income senior citizen exemption, if you make less than $37,400. That $1,300 check that they get and now is gonna count as income is going to potentially cost them money in the long run, because they could go from a 50% exemption, that $1,300 could shoot them up to 35% exemption. It's, I think it's just, unfortunately, with the real property tax law, we deal with poorly thought-out legislation and have to deal with it.
So we need to get straight on that now. So are there better off just continuing getting the exemption rather than the tax credit?
So, it depends. Now, the low, if you're, are you speaking to what I just addressed, the low income? So, that depends on the assessed value of their house, because the low-income exemption is a percentage. So if your house is only assessed at $70,000, no, it'd be well worth it. But if you have a house in the neighborhood of $280,000, $300,000, which you may not think, but we do have a lot of people in that situation where they're retired, yeah, they would potentially lose money by going to the STAR credit program, because that income is gonna boost them up several percent brackets. But to, and this is why Darius actually popped in today, to address the changes that we just spoken about, the trash exemption for enhanced STAR exemption, there's no longer an exemption. So Darius and I had to talk about how to address that going forward, because I haven't...
Oh, that's right, we had that in our trash sheet.
Yeah, I haven't been able to actually view the, you know, the actual ordinance that was passed, yeah.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The, the, I don't think it's my understanding that what was passed to exempt people from their trash fee was based on your acquiring the enhanced STAR exemption. But with the changes that the state just made last week, they're trying to fade out of an exemption. So these property owners, by the letter of the law now, don't have an exemption anymore and aren't gonna qualify.
But they still have to somewhere qualify based on income for enhanced STAR, so is there some...
But it's not an exemption.
But the intent, I mean, the language might need to be tweaked.
Yeah, 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 that's one.
The information is not there to...
We are not sure of the information.
Our language might need to be tweaked.
Right, I think, I think what we're gonna have to come back to the Council for in a bit is to change the language of the resolution to do that.
Right.
But, Fred, do you have...
I was just gonna say, what do we need to do?
Well, that's all, we, I firstly need to see if we can obtain this information easily from New York State. We need to see how that would, I mean, it might be a FOIL request, it could, I mean, I'm hoping that they will hand it over. Worst-case scenario is last year, there was a line printed on the school tax bill that said that you're enrolled in the STAR rebate program. So worst-case scenario, it would have to be proactive steps on the property owner to show that they're in it, but that's what we kind of figure out going forward.
Does that have any impact on the bills that are going out this year?
Yes, and that's, that's what we're trying to figure out right now. As you probably know, waste collection fee bills have not gone out yet, which is bad news, but also good news, because now hopefully we'll be able to correct some of this problem. The problem is that in actually putting the bills together, if we don't have the information on enhanced STAR eligibility, or anything remotely like that, we can't, people are not gonna have that exemption. So if you move from enhanced STAR to the state system, we don't have any way of knowing that. And that's what we have to figure out with the state, is to see if they can provide that information to us, so we can remove those people from, as exempt, from the trash fee collection bill. That means that you're probably going to get a lot of your constituents coming to you like, I'm on enhanced STAR, I should get this, this should be waived, this should be waived, and it's not. And we'll make every effort, obviously, to tell people that before we end in the bills that we're sending out. But if we're not able to do that in a meaningful fashion over the next month or so, it's gonna, you're gonna get a lot of blowback, and so we just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that, to address it. And we'll know more over the next few weeks, as we meet with IT finally on Friday, after they've dug themselves out of the ransomware attacks of the STAR program for this year.
Is there anything being done to, I mean, I don't even saw that article in the paper, so is there anything being done to notify people of, you know, benefits of applying for the tax credit?
Not proactively at the minute, well, today is the day that the tentative rolls actually published, and, you know, once we get through this week, it should have no negative fiscal impact on property owners this year. It's next year is when they would start to lose small percentages, because, well, there's two classes of people, there's two issues that this has. First, it reduces the STAR income limit from $500,000 to $250,000. And, you know, the state decided to do that on very short notice, you know, this came out last week, and they're already removed today. Those people have automatically been notified because there's an exemption renewal, removal notification. The people that don't switch, they'll have no negative impact this year, it's going forward, the exempt amount is not going to increase anymore. So every year, the amount exempt under Basic STAR and Enhanced STAR slightly raises to reflect, you know, rising cost of living, inflation. That number's never gonna change again. This year, the Basic STAR exemption is $30,000, the Enhanced STAR exempt amount is $68,700, that's never going to change again. So it's set at what it is this year. If, so we're going to, once the dust settles from our assessment roll coming out in the grievance period, we'll put out some kind of informational flyer to the people who still have the Basic STAR.
What's the deadline to making the change?
Well...
I thought it was in July or something?
Oddly enough, the state has not been very clear, but they did tell the County Tax Director that there is no deadline. So that logically doesn't make sense, because there's gotta be a cutoff for 2019. But when we raised the issue of, you know, the normal exemption deadline filing is passed, the tentative assessment roll's coming out Tuesday, Wednesday, what do we do? They said there's no, there's no deadline, they'll honor them on a rolling basis.
And once you change, you can't go back?
No.
Right, correct. So people really need to look at it, because depending on the impact that rebate checker is now gonna be taxable?
Everybody understands, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, does everybody understand what this is?
I'm glad this cannot, because I was reading things like, I don't know what to tell people.
Yeah, there's no way to, you know, to really, it's an individual choice, where people have to assess whether it's better to take, pay a lower school tax, you might say, or to switch over and get a check, which might be higher, but is now taxable.
Taxable.
Yeah, yeah. What's the down chatter?
Yep. People gotta take those, no, you can talk. Good luck, talk to your accountant. Talk to your accountant.
Talk to a top lawyer.
Yeah, or something like that.
I don't think so, because essentially what I expect to happen is that the same people who are in enhanced STAR, now, will still claim themselves to be taxably entitled to it.
A lot of stuff last year, I couldn't write it, I couldn't write it.
I don't foresee a major problem, a major problem, I mean, this will be your heading over the summertime, for all of us.
Is there any question? Going back to the original resolution, any questions on that?
So how, for a question, how quickly can we change the language to give the flexibility so that our lesson can benefit the overall public?
I think within the next two meetings.
Possible, but regardless of that, I mean, the intent is very clear, so it's not like you're gonna, it's, if, the language says if you have enhanced STAR, you're exempt, the question just is, do we have that information?
Well, there's that, and do the people who apply, who renounce their STAR exemption should go to the state for the check? Do those people qualify? That's the question. And I think legally, you know, from a strict construction standpoint, they wouldn't, is what Trey's saying. I think that's arguable, that's something we can look at, but I think changing the language...
No, they still have the enhanced STAR, even if it's not the exemption.
So I believe that what was passed says if you have received enhanced STAR exemption, the state's very clear to make a line that it's no longer, I know.
I think on our part, it's just a technical tweak.
I think so, I think so.
Can I, can I simply ask, you two gentlemen, both with legal background, draft the legislation for us to introduce by majority consent at Monday, so we can act on it at the following meeting as soon as possible? Essentially, one that, if need be, gives you the flexibility to recognize the, whatever this other thing is, as the same as the exemption, I'm thinking. Is that possible, so?
Yeah, I think it's adding five words.
So we would need it by Monday, right, Richard?
Yeah, it's local also.
So we can introduce it?
It has to age.
You said add the five words?
Yeah, no, I think it is.
Greece is gonna hate us.
Any, any other questions on the resolution itself? We're okay. And today's the first day for the grievance period. I noticed that the rolls were not online today, or they're...
Well, you know, Luke and IT was out this morning, so we, Sarah Camp is gonna put them on, we alerted her at about 10:00. And we're open till eight tonight, so I'll go double-check to see if she did.
So all the assessment roll, all the information you would need, that you might come to the assessor's office to physically inspect, will also be online, so you can pull it up there as well.
So...
And if you go to the assessor's webpage, also you will find the summary of the grievance period, the dimes and all that good stuff, as well as the summary of the STAR thing.
Oh, there is the summary of the STAR thing.
Yeah, it's very basic.
Yeah, because we just, it's one form that needs to be filled out and mailed to 112 State Street, so, you know, we're more than happy to take the phone calls, but we thought we could, you know.
But does that explain the pros and cons of it?
We, I explained it the best I could in plain language, I also linked the state's explanation page, which kind of has a chart.
Any other questions?
The last day for grievance?
May 28.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, then we're gonna move on, because we have some other things to need. I'm not sure we're gonna...
So we agree that that's a pass for this?
That's gonna be a pass for Monday, okay? Everyone's okay with that? So let's go back up to the beginning of the agenda. You've got the minutes for the April 15 meeting, which will be for adoption, any questions on that? Moving forward on Local Law is Held, Local Law B by Mr. Hoey is the one that relates to noticing of meetings and agendas that come out of the Operations Committee, that was gonna be a pass. Moving forward on Ordinances, 1051-19 is by Councilmember Daughshay. This is an amendment to the USDO. It's actually one of the proposals from the Planning Department that you want to pull out and try and expedite. So anyway, this will be an introduction, referral to planning.
If I, if I can just point out to folks, this would eliminate the blue roof, a green roof incentive that allows developers to have, essentially by right, an extra store on redevelopment that has been, you know, being taken advantage of. They actually put it in their draft, I'm taking their language that was in their draft USDO, and just saying, let's implement this sooner than later, let's not wait for the whole, let's resolve all issues with the 383-page document, let's take this out and address it. And I, and I wanna note that in going through the USDO, I noticed that blue roof, green roof is one of the things that a developer that is developing a lot that is under a quarter of an acre, so you're averaging fill housing kind of thing, is, so that's one of the things that they can do to meet requirements that they retain or detain water, up to a inch of water on their property. So that is something that is essentially a requirement, either that or systems or whatever, for these very small developers, and here we are, we're allowing these larger developers by right to add an extra store. So the Planning Department has said, we're getting little benefit from this incentive, so let's take that out, and I'm, and I'm just saying, let's take it out now.
Judy, some, some are underway right now, that that was approved, or they're okay with that? Now, I don't know if the Pladium has it, were they putting these roofs in the Pladium? Now, that's on the way, but they aren't at that point yet.
I don't know if the Pla, the Pladium was gonna have some green roof, but I don't think that they got the extra store as a result.
Well, one question, it's not built, the building by me, it's got that extra store, because they were a little bit, but I would imagine if you grandfathered in, if they got the approval, it'd be great if we could stop them.
I think that that is something we would have to have the attorneys look at, because I don't know what, if we could even do that. It would have to be expressed in our, in our, in our legislation. It would have to be expressed in our, in our, in our legislation that we're passing.
Media, these people there, Tom?
And I do want to note that, that this legislation does need to go through the planning board. I'm just getting it introduced now and then asked for it to be put on the planning board agenda. I hope that we will also discuss it maybe soon.
All right. So let's, right, that does require a planning board meeting, a planning board hearing, and a recommendation from the planning board before we can act. So we'll see what their schedule is. That will be an introductory referral to planning on ordinances held. Item number six by Mr. O'Brien is the ordinance that relates to the DGS adjudication process. That came out of the law committee. There's a technical amendment, but that will be a pass. And Joe, Mr. O'Brien will not be here on Monday. So do you want to?
So Joe.
So do you want to move in on his behalf?
Trying to get my ear, Mr. Kinnon.
Which one?
Uh, the DGS one.
DGS one.
That came out of the law committee. All right. Because Mike won't be here. Going forward on item number seven, this is some changes, this is mine. This relates to the grace period for transitioning your parking during a snow emergency, providing a one-hour grace period. This also came out of law, positive recommendation, there's a technical amendment. This also would be a pass for Monday. And the last one, item number nine by myself, Ms. Fahey and Mr. Hoey relates to amendments to the living wage ordinance. This came out of the human resources committee. This will be, also be a pass. There is going to be an amendment on this one as well, which is going, there's a provision in there as far as quarterly reports to the mayor of the council and living wage compliance committee on the number of contracts entered into. That quarterly report will also go to the treasurer, the auditor, and the chair of the Human Rights Commission. So that's just a residual three different entities. That will be a pass. On the resolutions introduced, 195119R relates to a grant that we all have already received through the CFA process this year for the Lincoln Park pool. This is just, this resolution just, we're required to pass this to authorize the mayor to actually enter into the agreement to be able to accept the funds. So it doesn't change anything, it's just a technical amendment, just a procedural resolution. Mr. Johnson, you carry that? And that would be a pass for Monday also. The, and then we talked about the communication workers one, which will be a pass. And then on the other resolutions held, we just talked about the assessor's office, one which will be a pass. Then I believe there are some requests for majority consent that somebody has?
Yeah.
Which, I don't like MCs, but, you know...
It's such a recent debate, as we're proclaiming May 419 as a bike month for the meeting, as a bike month in the city of Woburn.
This is some week down the...
Yeah, Leah always did that. Are you, it requires that you have to ride a bike around the chamber waving the resolution during the meeting?
Okay. Well, you sound funny. No, it's my, my coalition reached out to me to kind of continue this tradition going, so I'm, okay, great, awesome.
So do you have the res, the resolutions on the round?
Yeah.
You break out there?
No.
Um... Do you have any, any questions on that? Everybody want to be co-sponsor?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the number on this one?
This one will be...
What?
Yep.
Is it 21?
This would be, what's the last one we had?
21.
Okay. It's the number 215119R. Was there another resolution, another MC? Jamal?
Here you are.
And this is it here?
Yes.
Can we pass that around?
Did you get a copy of this?
Yeah, I got a copy of that.
Can I get one before those two come?
Okay. And...
All right, so the resolution that I wanted to introduce, my name is to follow New York State Legislature and pass some time, the marijuana regulation and taxation act. This will definitely need to end, I would say, the war on drugs that has adverse impact in communities' health. So in this resolution, the governor, I mean, the president of the CDC, the bill calls for, what are the changes that need to be made to Massachusetts? The bill, of course, calls for six marijuana plants to be able to be cultivated in someone's home. I think that should be looked up to municipalities, besides what the appropriate number of marijuana plants are for someone's home. And also that it purposes, cultivating marijuana in their home, that there should be no minors present in the neighborhood. And also it calls for a portion of any sales tax revenue that is made from this to go to communities who have been impacted by the drug. So I also have a fact sheet, give everybody a fact sheet. So if anyone, you know, has questions, these are some of the most common questions I can have. So I would like all your support, all of your support and...
Well, I think there's a whole bunch of, I think it's the Globe, oh, the Globe last weekend? In Massachusetts, it's legalized, okay? It's saying that the market price for it legally is NIL, okay? And it's driving up the private market again, which is, and it's not regulated stuff. So that's just a side effect that's happening. I just read that, I don't know anything more about it, but it's going to be a...
Just before we go too far, so my inclination would just be an introduction for Monday? This is, yeah, I don't know where people are on this. The legislation is referenced here, I don't know if we have a copy of the legislation?
The legislation is 69 pages long, so I was not going to print it for everybody tonight, but it's accessible on the Assembly and Senate websites.
And the numbers are here.
And the numbers in the resolution.
So my inclination would be for an introduction on Monday, but to set, allow members to look at it, do what they know to do. I don't know how people feel right now, and we can have further discussion at our next caucus. Tom?
I think the concern is that, you know, the legislature wrapped it up, so I think that's...
No, right, I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
The legislature is a representative session, the governor did say that there's a direct to private markets, like, you know, that would give us an opportunity to maybe have some, maybe be allowed so we can have the public buy and weigh on it, and then they can use it off to the council board.
I know we're just going to introduce it, but I, I know there's a lot of people who would like to see this passed. I also know that there's many people who are a lot concerned about the current legislation at the state level and a lot of different issues that are being worked on. So from that, it will convince that it's going to pass this year. But I think that I personally would, I, I have concerns on my way to see, you know, and look at some of these issues, but many different aspects of it.
Yeah, one of the things about, Kathy, actually because you work for a member of the Assembly who, you know, you were in a particular position where you might want to abstain or something like that. But one of the things in terms of a piece of legislation like this, which is very fluid, is that it's changing or potentially changing. I see it's already up to a C plan as you, as it moves forward. So what you endorse today might not be what you suggest later. I don't know. Dorsey?
So I'll call sponsor, but especially the, the, is it intentionally failed?
Yeah. That's what it is in the legislation. I don't know why. I just remember this for a reason.
It's a medical, it's a medical term.
I don't want to get too much priority over...
That's legal. I don't know if it's called, I mean, I'm sorry, Jared, for misdemeanor offenses, marijuana convictions, be expelled.
Okay. So this will just be introduction for Monday, we'll have further discussion on it, and we would target if we're going to act on it at our following meeting. Which, by the way, I think will be a youth in government night.
Yes.
Just remind people of that. Did we have, and this would be 225119R.
Say, what, 19?
22.
22.
22.
Right, 5119R. Do we have anything else on the agenda before we move on? Alfredo and then Sean?
Presidential talk, and open bills talk.
Yeah, yeah. I have, I have a map, you were away, but I have a map to look at. I got some comments from Uso in terms of some boundary changes. But that's something, I don't know if we can get together soon.
Please don't move so deep. Please. I don't... Oh, this is...
Anything, Kashana? Folks, quiet, quiet.
May 15th.
And that's not fillable in, we have to print it out?
I'm asking for the...
Yeah. Okay. All right, any...
Anything else?
We, we were going to have another discussion, but I'm not sure now if we're going to...
Can do it.
Should we just say where we're going and we're not going to have... Folks, folks.
Joe, listen up.
I'm going to ask for a motion for executive session to discuss a personnel matter, staff only. Is there a second?